Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gina?
Oh.
No?
You're putting me on no, that's alright.
Mission statement and strategic priority four.
Mission statement, we will empower a community of lifelong learners who strive for personal excellence through meaningful relationships and real world authentic learning experiences. Strategic priority number four, build strong authentic relationships among students, staff, and community members.
Thank you ma'am. Now it's the time to for a board member declare a conflict of interest if you have one, if so, please declare it. Seeing that we'll.
Do I need to do that for the? Personnel report?
Are you on the first?
Do I just need to do that during that?
I knew you could just say from both of us.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, perfect. Okay. Any other changes or updates to the agenda than what was presented?
No.
Now I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Much by Malcolm, second by Gina. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side, motion carries. Visitors, I see no one. Anything submitted? Justin or Kami?
Nope.
Okay. Information only, curriculum update.
Yeah, so I told the principal, you kind of June, July, they're off, we'll have them back in August and they'll kind of highlight their plans for the year, but we won't have them here the next two meetings. We usually do it, update every year at this time in June about what was as far as curriculum, what happened over the year and any new adoptions going into next year. So Cory's here to kind of go over that with you. So I did. He got the PowerPoint a little bit late, it's only one slide, but I did link it in there for you. So. I want to pull it up for him and he can take the show.
Yep, so pretty basic. Can I take a look? Can I stop any? Thanks. Sorry, my computer's used for the zoom. Okay, so just a few things here, this won't be long. See if I can get into here, I promise. One of the big picture things, normally like if we would have adopted a series or things like that, that would be for approval. We're not in that boat here tonight. So really what I wanted to do was just share kind of a couple of things. One of the big picture ones that has been a conversation is the science materials at the elementary and that's going to be taught. At the, at the classroom level. So what I wanted to do was just do a brief like, let's see if I can get it right on the first line. No. I want to get in here and just show you kind of what that looks like. Not bad on trying to. Okay, and so you won't have access to this as per in the document, but I just wanted to just do a brief like show and tell kind of thing, what this looks like. And so. At the classroom level, the exciting part is this is what our kids were using a year ago when it was part of the spec, as part of the specials rotation. At the elementary, these are the materials they've been using, so we won't have a break in any of that. And this is really exciting because it has a ton of flexibility in how science instructions delivered. And so the, the outfit or platform that we use is called Amplify Science. It scores really well. In Ed reports, which is kind of like a curriculum database of where they, they evaluate materials and things like that. It is fully aligned to Iowa science standards. And the exciting part about these materials is the amount of flexibility that the classroom teacher has. And how it's taught, when it's taught, and where it's taught. And so these materials are plug and play. Where I get a sequence of lessons and it's already aligned, the assessments are developed already for the classroom teacher. So a classroom teacher with a high level of science experience can develop these lessons and implement them. A classroom teacher with a minimal experience of teaching science can pick this up. And there is a ton of professional development. In the area of next generation science standards and science instruction embedded in these, in this platform. So it's an opportunity for if a teacher doesn't have as much science experience, this is going to help them out tremendously. And how it's broken down is each grade level K one, two, three, has a number of units. And so in kindergarten, first grade, there are three units and second and third, I think there's four units of instruction. And Doug and I have worked with the teachers on which units are going to be taught the first year and those types of things. We've said, you know, at least we want at least two of the three or three of the four units taught throughout the year. And so that way it's their first year of implementation and things like that. This is not like a sit and get, it's, it's not like a workbook where a kid fills it out. Each unit has a thing that the kids create. And so it's more of a STEM program than it is just a science pullout program. And really what I'll do is I'll just walk you through a couple of them. So like this is one of the ones, it's called pushes and pulls. And so this is in. This is in, let's go, okay, I think this is in second grade. And so really what this breaks down to is, is in each unit, there's a chapter. And then in each chapter, there are lessons and it has a, here's what you need to do today, here's what you need to do tomorrow type of thing. So when it comes to lesson planning and things like that, this is pretty user friendly. And everything is aligned to Iowa's next generation science standards. And it's also aligned to the cross cutting concepts where it's the interdisciplinary approach. Because this could also be taught during a literacy block. This could also be taught in isolation of a literacy block. And so it just depends on how we choose to do it. We'll choose to do it independent from the literacy blocks. So we're going to do it outside of that time. But it also has a literacy component to it. So then they can take those OG routines and those literacy standards. And also work when it's science. So it's not like it's just our science sign, or it's just our literacy time and vice versa. So they can use those skills that they're learning in science and apply it to literacy. And so really this is just an overview of Amplify Science. We'll bring it back. When school starts and we'll bring it back when, you know, when Doug can do some updates and things like that and how things are going. I'm just, I'm really excited about this opportunity. And for our staff, it's a lot, we've done a lot of training in this already. And actually they've planned the first unit of instruction for next year. Already with our ADA science consultant. So they're well ahead of the game. So I'm just really excited about that. I just know this has been a topic of conversation. And I just, this is one of the biggest adoptions that we'll have for next school year, especially at the elementary. Other than that, what we've got going on, and this will be a conversation for a little while, is the state this year reviewed math standards. And so we had some training with actually the Department of Education and our staff as part of our snow makeup day at the end of the year with our. Teachers at the case K six level and then at the seven twelve level. And so we didn't see a huge shift in math standards, other than how we'll assess standards at the like report card time. And like when it's time to assess standards, there'll be some work on that, but we have a three-year implementation plan. I linked like a seventy-five page document from the state. The biggest change that we will see is the state is asking that we no longer look at math standards individually. But we look at clusters of math standards and that's how they want us to see assessment work in the future. That's one of the biggest shifts that we'll have. The other is, is they have told us there where we should be spending eighty to eighty-five percent of our time with math standards. That's new to us as well. The other side is, is they're not sure if it's going to correlate to ISAS yet or not, but that was the conversation that they were having with us. Social studies is another update. We began this year of integrating social studies within English language arts, starting this past year. That worked really, really well. I see that coming probably to the elementary level when we adopt a new ELA series in a couple of years. But that's something that's still being taught in isolation at the elementary level. And there are some materials that go along with that. And also we've hit a lot of our social studies standards honestly through our authentic learning projects. At the elementary where it's the community problem solving and those types of things, which is really cool. And there's also guidance coming at the end of the legislative session. There was some social studies things that came across, so we should get some guidance on that. But what they've asked is some specific things be taught, particularly at the elementary level, even at the junior high and high school level. There are also going to be specific like Iowa history topics that are to be taught. We're not sure what those are yet, but we're just hearing rumblings that that's supposed to come from the legislative level. And that's happened about the last couple of times where it used to be where the state board oversaw those things and now it's going right from legislation to classrooms. And so that's one thing that we're still waiting to hear on like, what are some of those specific topics? But it's, it's about like how history should be taught and those types of things. And then the last big picture curriculum change for next year is going to be the cybersecurity program. And I linked in the course descriptions for you. It's basically a series of three courses where when they finish and if they take all three courses of cybersecurity, they'll walk out with an industry credential. A recognized industry credential and they'll honestly be able to go right into the workforce. And or they can take that credential and go on to some, some secondary, you know, training or things like that in the area of cybersecurity. This is kind of the next popular wave of like, this is the next big thing that's coming for like college career readiness is this idea of computer science and cybersecurity. And we're getting in at the perfect time. And so I'm really excited about that opportunity for our kids. We've got a bunch of kids already signed up for one and two. And we looked at, we offered it to other districts around us as well. I just, this is one of those next big things that are coming. And I'm just excited that we're able to get in when we were able to get in. So that's a really neat opportunity. I linked in those three course descriptions. We talked about that when we did the high school course guidebook. So I'm not going to repeat that, but you have access to that. But the exciting part is the kid will walk out with a industry recognized credential. And the third course is actually assigning a mentor in, in the outside community where they can get project-based hands-on learning. In the world of cybersecurity and the course helps design that kind of like MOC, but for cybersecurity. And it's not necessarily they go do a job where they get paid, but they get, they, they collaborate with a mentor. And then the other big picture things that are happening, just so you know kind of what we've been up to in this area of the world. In a couple of weeks, we are sending twelve staff, one of them is me, to be trained in this idea of project-based learning through what's called the Buck Institute. They, it, it's an actual training, it's proprietary lesson planning templates and things like that, where they will walk staff through. And teach how to build what they call a gold standard project. Some of the work though, like Jim Hightoff has done, it's been done through that module process and through that process. He's been trained in this mindset. And so we'll have twelve staff trained in that, really excited about that. We will also train new staff in capturing kids' hearts one, which is the one we went through. Three or four years ago that we've sent everybody through. So we're going to send everybody who's new to us through that teacher wise. And then another training that's going to take place next year at the secondary level, seven twelve level, will be this idea of authentic intellectual work. So it's, it's taking the PLC model and how do we look at the work we're putting in front of kids? And what levels of rigor and like complexity are we putting in front of kids? And it will let teachers analyze the things that we're putting in front of kids. Does it tie into the idea of authentic learning? Does it tie into our strategic priorities? All of those things will have an opportunity to do that. As a team. And so that'll be really exciting. That's really what, there's a lot more on here, but we could go on for hours about this. But these are like, this is like the greatest hits of kind of what's coming.
One of the big things with ADW that Drew, Josh, and Kim to it, one they has prior experience, but when they score a task from a teacher asks, what's the value beyond school? And their peers give them feedback on, does it, does it resemble work that you would be asked to do outside the four walls? And if not. The whole process is how do you give feedback to help them make it have more value beyond schools? Does that make sense?
So the students are giving feedback to others?
Staff, staff are. Staff brings a, they'll bring a lesson they're going to teach, like a task and all the instruction. And as a group, they sit there and there's rubrics and they score it. Like what are, what are kids being asked to do? Who's making the connection? Is it student or is it teacher? And one of them, is there value in this beyond school? Like, does this have value outside of the four walls? And the rubric is very specific and they all score it and have to justify their score. But the power is then how do you, if it's a two, how do I move it to a four? Like if I said it's a two, what kind of feedback can I give you as a staff member? To maybe take this to a level four? And then the teacher gets to decide what they incorporate and what they don't. But it's a way to systematically drive that conversation at a PLC level.
And it gives buildings and teams common language of, okay, like if forty percent of our tasks this month were ones where at the like memorization level. Like what are the implications of that over time and things like that? Because part of our size district is we don't have six Algebra I teachers that can write common assessments and things like that. However, we might have, we do have four high school, four or five math, high school math teachers. That can then analyze, okay, what are the tasks we're putting in front of the kids as a department? And as a department, how can we make some of those instructional decisions as a team? And that's going to create a lot of common language and commonality amongst a team of folks, which is really exciting. And so that does have to create some commonality with those folks. Like Justin's talking about, like it gives us the ability to make some of those decisions on, okay. If we're sitting here, what are some of the instructional decisions we need to make to continue to up the ante and the questions or the tasks we're putting in front of kids? And that's exciting too. But that, any questions for me with what's happening? Math standards, we get a three-year conversation for that. Next year, we're really just going to do a like audit of. Which standards are we spending most time with and things like that? And level plan for that, but this is really new. And then we also heard lots of standards could be reviewed at the state level. So more to come.
And graduation requirements.
And graduate, and chapter twelve and all of that. And so.
It's all coming.
It's all coming at some point, but.
Did you see like one of the lessons from Amplify Science?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So like, let's get back into here. Let's go to, what grade level you want to see?
Uh, third.
Third, okay. So here are the four units. And so you get an idea of that it's STEM related. There is some, there is, it's a, it's a STEM program, but it's also a science program curriculum. And you just get an idea. So these are the four units of instruction that are within third grade. Let's go into balancing forces for fun. And so.
If you chose like, if you've decided there's going to be three of them that you want them to cover or all the standards covered within those three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the nice part is, is. Every, if, even if we taught one, we're going to hit the majority of the power standards and things like that. This is a strong, robust program. And the other thing that's really nice is the flexibility of, I could teach this once a week, I could teach this three times a week, I could teach this five times a week. And we're still going to get a really neat experience. It is a hands-on experience as well. So the children will build things, break things, repair things, all those types of. Instead of just, here's the science, write it down in a notebook and call it a day. They do have an investigation notebook and things like that. So like here's, here's one of the units. So here's one of the chapters. So it's, it's engineering about. And each chapter has a compelling question that it comes back to. So the first chapter question in this one is, why does the train rise? And it really gets into this idea of force. And it starts getting that idea of like, what are the forces around us? And so you get into the third lesson. And so what this does is this breaks it down into, okay, when I'm the teacher, here's the content I need to know. That's step one. So it's already giving that teacher that content knowledge. Because we have a tremendous amount of teachers who have experienced teaching science and we have some who don't. And so this is going to level that playing field for the ones that don't. And it's going to help, help create some of that commonality because they haven't seen, they haven't worked with next gen science standards for a while. And then what it does is it provides the literacy part, which is the reading part. It also provides the discussion part for the student, student discussion, and that's the three and four. And so then what you get here is you get, everybody gets a slide deck of all of the lessons. And so if we are a third grade team, that has already been developed for us. And so we get a Google slide presentation of all the lessons, all the things that need to be projected, all the pictures, all the tasks, all of that is all warehoused in this online component. And then the kit is the physical component. Years ago, they called them FOS kits and things like that. Amplify has taken that concept. And they've done the online component and then they've kept still the physical kits where the kids build stuff and break stuff and do stuff. And so that's really neat. And so, and so that takes you through this entire lesson of, it has the lesson objectives. And then it has the, here's what they're going to do. And so there's teacher modeling and those types of things. And it gets into then the kids practice with forces. And so really that's where this unit is going is it does some of the background work. And the kids then start practicing and start building, they'll build like a, a train thing and they'll learn this idea of force. And that, and then they'll get the cross cutting concepts and things like that. But that's really what one, this is like one of the lessons within one of the units look like. So it gives you that idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one more question. So the CKH, anybody that hasn't had CKH one will be going, not just the people hired this year.
Yep. So what we try to do, the challenge is the time, is the July training. They off, and they used to do Moravia. And Des Moines, this year they didn't offer Moravia because apparently they had some damage to some of their facilities where they have meetings. And so they weren't able to have meetings. And so the challenge is that. But the goal is whoever hasn't had it gets an opportunity to do it. And then we take new staff as well. Yes.
Yeah. So we send, we'll send invite to all the new staff that we hired and try, anybody who hasn't, who can go, we're trying to send.
That's it for me. Any questions? Sorry, I wasn't sure what, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, nothing to be approved or anything, just let you know what I'm up to. Or what we are up to. Not just any questions for Dr. St. John?
No.
Okay, consent agenda. What was that Emily? Sorry.
That just, that looks good.
Okay. Consent agenda minutes, we have the last regular meeting on the thirteenth and then the special session from the twenty-four. Any changes to those that anybody saw? Paid bills and invoices?
You see a lot of open enrollment, those bills are just kind of flowing in, so you'll see some of those.
Well, can I?
I didn't really see anything that stood out.
My walkies was only three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
We've only got two students, three students. Where is walkie?
That's just, it was, walkie community schools tuition, three eighty-eight fifty-four. I thought that seemed like a very cheap tuition.
They moved, it was just partial and you get to fill this by day.
Okay. And then we had Chartwells under general for services of like.
Just a little.
Okay. See, I knew you'd have it. I didn't even bother you with it early. I knew you, anytime Chartwells is under general, I always question.
That's a good question. They usually sit under sixty-one.
Yes. Any other questions on paid bills for Kami? Sorry, I'll quit looking at paid, paid bills, you guys. Personnel report. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Yeah, so obviously that's kind of a big deal. And we'll talk about that later. So congrats to Sam for, for taking that on and. Couple of resignations there. And then also I'd reached, and Aberwar reached out to me. She did sign her contract. She's been offered another position closer to home. If you remember last year, those on the board, last two years, I think we had a teacher do that. We accept a contingent upon a suitable replacement. If we don't, we hold them to their contract. I communicated that's how it's been done in the past, but only the board can make that decision. So that's why it's here. It's just kind of how we've handled them the last two or three years. So.
So the fund is on.
It is. Yeah, we've got a couple that were, that were interviewed that I think the team liked. One really liked, would like to be here. They're hoping that she's still interested and will reach out. So as soon as that happens, we'll throw it out tomorrow that it's internal and then we'll start the process. So.
Open enrollment, there's a few out, but none in for, for board approval. So it's just no action on the outs. Financial report, Kami.
Uh, we're in the new way, this is the last month, your financial will look normal to you. Because then we start the whole process of pulling everything from July and August back into the current fiscal year. So you'll see a lot of pre-pays and accruals and. We'll bring all the July and August teacher contracts back into June. It'll just look very funky for about two months and then we start all over again. I remember we only update on the nutrition fund at year end as part of the audit. We bring everything in line. But I just wanted to let you know where we're at now. We currently have negative accounts at one thousand one fifty-eight fifty. And those will show up under other receivables and nutrition. That is two hundred and fifty-six negative accounts ranging from ten cents to ten dollars. So bad debts are not an issue in the district there. Then we have nineteen seven sitting on account, people with positive accounts. And we have five thousand forty-three dollars in the donation account. So we're in good shape. We shouldn't get any dings on the nutrition portion of our audit. Well, we won't get any dings on.
Emily's checking hers really fast.
Trust, trust me, you would know.
You would know. You get like a text and then if a campus gets mad at you, yeah.
Campus is super done as well. So.
Yeah, we all get it. You'll know.
It's a, it's frequent on my.
I think you get one thing, you're, you're close to going low now, right? You get like the warning text.
No. I was gonna say, well, somebody's okay.
Yeah. No, Sheena finally logged in and put money in.
Cause it was still telling.
It goes all summer. She's like, we're gonna put money.
It continues to get up. Yeah, you would know.
That's what I know. Yeah.
Questions for me on the statement of position? As far as revenues and expenditures were slightly ahead of the three-year average. I think maybe everybody's gotten on board with all of their billings. We also are in a position to spend out a minimum amount of cash this year. Remember that's going to pick up steam as we go forward. So I don't see anything here to be alarmed about, but we are over a percentage off of our three-year average. So we'll see how things shake out by the end of the year. Questions for me on financials?
Nope. Okay. Contracts, first one is workplace learning coordinator sharing agreement.
Yeah, we've had this in place of for us to be the second year, third year Cory. There was some shift on their end. We took a little longer using this when coming in May. We were working to get through that. But it's back, she'll be in our district one day a week. Does a lot of work behind the scenes, career fair at the high school. She does a lot of work with contacting employers and helping get that up. Some of the work in our ICAP, some of the work with kids going on calls visits. So that's kind of the work we're getting out of that. Earlam holds, holds a contract. We, we get sharing dollars to help cover a large portion of our costs. I said, I say, Earlam, all right, thirty-five, I apologize. Thirty-five holds contract. It's a shared position. So we get. Something I'm waiting to help cover some of our costs, most of our costs for that position. So.
Any questions on that one?
None.
Shared soccer, Earlam.
Yeah, pretty standard. Yeah, continuing.
I was gonna say, we usually do this before soccer season. Gotcha. Any questions on that one? Okay. I Jag, junior high.
Yep. So this is the updated one based on our conversation that we had in May to pursue this. This is the actual agreement. Mir is very closely the one at the high school, except we see there's no fees for us for two years for FI twenty-five and twenty-six. And they have actually posted the position and are trying to find someone. So anticipated. So.
Any questions on that one?
It says in this contract or whatever, that there will be a mentor teacher, that they will be assigned at the junior high. Who is that?
Josh, we're gonna choose.
Oh.
Yeah, yep. Josh will choose somebody. And with London at the high school, probably a lot of it will fall on him. But yeah. It's just really how a school works, attends PD with them, kind of make sure that they get to those things.
I kind of assume because. So I just was wondering if, you know.
Yeah, good question.
Anything else on that one? Next up is TPRA, amendment number three.
It just keeps rolling along. They keep changing the rules on us. They told us that this one will make things much easier. They're moving from a reimbursement and auditing all of your expenditures. To a system where they'll just pay you if you have the qualified apprentice and you can show progress. So this is the denim number three. We need that board approval before we can move on with our new method.
And we currently have four staff who are in this program who are attending William Penn University to be teachers.
Really is a great program. It's not, it's very cumbersome.
As I said, we got reimbursed yet or?
Yes.
Okay, cause that was a big holdup with the first.
It's better than it was.
And then number two got better.
Addendum number three. Still ways to go.
Yeah, I haven't had quarter three funds yet, but I do know it's been reviewed and they haven't asked any questions. So this, going forward, it's supposed to make all of that much better.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
Next one, Sorexo.
That's the name of the team.
Okay.
Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so I reached out to Sarah. I, hopefully I didn't overstep my bounds because I was already talking to her on regards to something else. But there is a section six underneath of that agreement, which is alcoholic beverage sales. And that was very alarming to me, you know, and. I've participated in I Cubs games, concessions and sales, and you likely are to have it. Talked to Sarah, she said, she asked the lady that they are not actually in one of the booths they're doing. It's a, a picnic is what they're calling it. So they'll be on a buffet line, just monitoring buffet. I said, so no sales, no nothing. She said, absolutely not. I said, good. Cause I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I believe we do not want our students selling alcohol or be part of alcohol sales. And she said, totally agree. We will not have that happen. So. I hope that satisfies. That was my only catch on that contract. Yeah.
And we can X that out, that section and say, no alcohol sales and initial it, before we send it back.
Mm-hmm. Actually, I had conversations with Randy as well, and Randy agreed. And he's going to ask that they ensure that our kids aren't around alcohol. So I think the Xing it out and initially it can be worthwhile.
She said it's some sort of buffet style picnic event. They're giving, it won't actually be in one of the concession stands.
Yeah.
Okay. Donovan group.
Yeah, yearly agreement we had, I think we've got our money's worth this year. That's, we were talking before, you know, they, we get a weekly thing with posts that we approve. That they push out a lot of the videos, all the alumni videos they created. So all of those have been their work. You'll, in my update, I talked a little bit, the end of year, the buckets update, they're working on that. The financial update that I put out, they're working on that. Cory and I finished the interview academic report. They'll jazz that up and we'll get that out. So they're, they have all of those things currently. So I think it's been a good investment for the district to really showcase us. And so I'd like to extend it for the year.
And they help, also help with those, some of those different press releases we've done.
They do. So some of those emergency ones, they contacted, they, they drafted. And going back, you know, when, when the incident happened in Perry, they actually reached out and said, hey, we're working on the districts and. Crafted our message out, kind of that it wasn't involving us. And so very timely when you're able to be.
Yep. Perfect, any questions on Donovan group? Kami, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pull out the personnel report from the consent agenda. We'll approve the consent agenda minus the personnel, and then we'll approve the personnel secondary, if that's all right, that way Sam can approve the rest of the consent. Sound good? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus, um, item C, the personnel report.
Whichever way.
Sam made the motion, Gina seconded the motion, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, all right, now it entertains a motion to accept the personnel report as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Malcolm, second by Gina, any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, anybody abstain? Motion carries. Full business.
Yeah, so just bring the ISB policies that were mostly financial updates that you saw a month ago. Um, ask that you approve them and then we'll get those turned in. Did hear from Shabat today, we'll be getting another batch here at the end of June. So, but these are, we'll get these, we'll get those updated, so.
Any question on those? Not, I would entertain a motion to approve the, on the second reading, the board policy updates based on IASB recommendations as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Motion by Gina, second by Sam, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, new business, approval of FFA officers overnight retreats.
Yeah, she reached out, um, they do an overnight officer retreat, any overnight trip has to be board approved, so that's why it's here. Uh, it's for their officers and going to, I think, a family members, um. Cabin or something for their office retreat, so again, because it's overnight needs board approval.
Where did they go?
Oh, it's in there, where's it at?
I didn't, it didn't actually, yeah.
Looks like a lake.
It is, where, I thought she put it in, she told me in my email.
Think they're the Ozarks.
It's, yes, yes. I'm sorry, sorry, I thought it was in there, she emailed me and was going over, I thought it was included in there.
Random question.
So, well.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It was June eight, nine and ten. So maybe ask Miss Barry to make sure it comes, yeah. A little more timely next time.
After the main meeting?
Yeah. I mean, it had a little bit, it's hard, I know sometimes I do, I have the same issues. Those newspaper deadlines, we got on, yeah.
That's ten dollars for coffee.
Sure it's not like Casey's thought.
They're not coming to coffee. Any? Any questions on that or can I entertain a motion to approve it?
I don't know questions.
Is there a motion? Pushed by Gina, is there a second? Second by Sam, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, all right, next one, board member. Resignation and intent to fill vacancy through appointment, so is this? Kami, Justin is leading the charge on this, me?
Um, so I handed, I'd shared with you before, but I included their kind of ISB guidance on this process and how it's how it looks, um. And the board has the ability to appoint unless petitioned by the, uh, your voters to run a special election. Um, so that information is in there, I think even what went to the, came and put in there, what it would be to, what they need for signatures, so four and thirty-four signatures if they wanted to. Petition, um, so that would be, I think, um, in conversation, the board's intended to try and appoint. Uh, unless we're petitioned to, um, note, I think, we sent a notice that's included there to the paper, so it'll go out here on Wednesday. Um, Sam's letter says she's done August first, which is prior to her starting to work, so she's under a contract until then. Uh, so she can serve at the July meeting, but if we get people interested, you get appointed to July meeting, give us some time to onboard and they would, first meeting would be in August. Uh, unless we're petitioned for a special election, that changes the timeline a little bit.
And to be clear, if we appoint. That person or somebody else would be, would run again at our election cycle for the remainder of two years. If they petition and we do a ballot, they would be good for the remainder through twenty-seven, correct? So, that, that was some, some, in the community, well, you know, people are saying, so is it, you know, how long are we appointing for, we're only appointing basically for a year and. Some change until that next election.
So do we just come with ideas up here, right?
So I think the notice asks them to submit, uh, answers to two questions, are they in this one?
It's right in the middle, it's with the intention of filling, they.
Two or three.
Have a letter to the board secretary by July first, including why are they interested in serving on the board? And how will current experience be helpful to, to board work? And then we, yes, we will discuss those.
So in that, uh, there's two options, uh, the board, uh, in that packet. No, in that packet, sorry, the packet that they send, board can do it two ways, um, you go to closed session, but you're not. Can't compare and contrast, right?
Right.
You can talk about, or you do it open session and, and appoint at that time, um, I've had.
Yes, of course.
Uh. I gave that, I know of three that have, have expressed interest who have heard about it, that may be interested in, in filling the appointment, so.
And this is new to me, I've, this has not happened since I've been on, Kami, you said this is only. So, it has been done in the district this way.
I mean, a special election, well. If, you pay for it.
Right.
Yeah.
And then sometimes trying to find the interest, you may go back and see if a past board member wants to fill the vacancy. Because they're trained and up to speed, because Sam's already been to governance training. Um, finance one-on-one, we've been through our budget cycles.
We had a work session here with the entire board.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, you, you're not gonna make, so depending, we don't have anything. Um, unusual on our, on our to-dos, on our table, but that's an option too. So depends upon what interest comes your way.
So, yeah, so if we move forward with that option, you know, which is what I would recommend is that, just if anybody asks you, just tell them. Submit those and they'll find that, we'll have, will we have that on the district, district website or will we just?
Yep, we put it on the website, uh, it'll be in the board, it'll be in the paper. You know, right, cause that's the notes going to the paper, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so it'll be in the paper, we put on the website.
The notes in the paper does not talk about, that, the notes in the paper explicitly says that you're going to appoint, however, um. Citizens have the right to petition and ask for a special election, it doesn't go into the, how to fill the appointment.
So I'd say maybe we have it as a landing page on the district one, you know, or something for, for a little bit of time.
Same thing we did like board election four.
And just have it up there, you know, if you'd like to apply. Quote-unquote for, you know, the vacancy, here's the questions and the timeline of it to be.
Will be published?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We're on the, on the website.
On the website.
Yeah.
Not in the paper.
No, the paper, uh, what's going in the paper, I believe is attached.
The appoint to, yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah. I think it also says contact Kami on there, so she'll point him in the right direction. Any questions on this process? Bless you, sir.
Excuse me.
Any questions?
No.
You good?
Just thinking about how far fourteen days is, so.
It, yeah, we, we set that up a calendar and made sure everything fit into our, uh, into the buckets, into the timeline. And if, but if there's a petition, that kind of throws our time, you know, that'll. Cause I think we have sixty days to have the election.
When?
From.
No, soon.
Um, Sam has resigned effective August first.
Right.
Because her contract will start in August, so he has thirty days from August first to fill it, unless that special election has been called.
Right. And, or unless we are unable to fill it, then, but we, then we have to do that election within sixty days.
Yes.
Okay.
So if you, so if you're allowed to point, you're not petitioned, you can select in July.
And they would start it.
And then they would start August, which would be one of the thirty days of her resignation.
So remind me when this goes into the paper?
It'll end soon.
I've already sent it to the paper.
Oh.
So it's just a matter of if they get it in this Wednesday's paper, then it's fourteen days from then. But it depends on kind of on the size and I did not stress, I didn't. If, if it's extremely time sensitive, I will ask for that, I did not ask for that this time, so. Worst case scenario is it's pushed back one week and then it's one more, however. You could still discuss and appoint at the August meeting and still meet your.
So. We have to accept the resignation and make the recommendation for how we're filling the vacancy, that's the motion, Kami.
That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, we will understand you.
I would entertain a motion to accept, uh, Sam Paulingsworth resignation and approve the process to fill the vacancy for the board seat as presented.
So moved.
Bush by Malcolm, second by Gina, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Gina was reading over that, she was an aye. And one abstain, okay, motion carries. All right, the board member report, Sam.
Um, I don't think I have anything, uh, it seems like a long time ago, but the Wax Museum, that, that fifth year.
Yes.
That's my new favorite thing.
It's a blast.
It's really cool, like, my four-year-old came along with me and he loved it also, so.
And I love how they, they changed the setup this year and did all the school first and then just a parent time, cause it used to be. We were trying to go with Blakely and Sawyer, there was everybody all at once and it was a little chaotic, but yes, it's, it is one of my favorites.
And then from what I saw, all the end of the year celebrations were really fun, the kid hub, of Austin.
I gave Jared a note, I will miss the August meeting, I'm sure I'm gonna be on vacation.
Okay, I'm sure. Any others? Um, we made it through another school year. I mean, it went, it happened, it was all good.
It was a good year.
Yeah, it was a good year, a lot of good things happened. A lot of great things happened, look forward to another one, I mean, registration's open, I've been telling everybody, get your kids registered. There are some people that still go, oh yeah, I need to do, just like Emily's face down here, but like. Kids register, so we can start working on those things. Oh. We got a computer out here, we. We can set you up before you leave, Emily.
Okay.
But no, that's all right, thank you, uh, Justin and all the staff, top to bottom, um, it, it doesn't go unnoticed by. Us up here about all the work that it takes to, to make a school year go on and. Um, I called Justin Vane, he was already doing training for the coming year, so I know it never stops, so. Thank you all.
Favorite.
Malcolm. Emily.
Nothing except for, I just wanna say there was a teacher that I saw about one of the students, it was like the second to the last day. She missed her PE class and the te- the PE teacher allowed her to stay in there and she got to do it. Like with people that weren't her friends. But it was amazing, so our staff.
Yeah.
Were amazing, so.
Yeah.
I just, I've been to a lot of baseball games, soccer things, and the amount of. Outside time that our staff puts into the students in this district as well. Are always welcome, like my daughter's one of them, she comes to find you, I, they just, our teachers don't ever stop, they don't take the summer off, which I love, so. There's, they're still teachers to those kids all summer long, so.
And I, I'm gonna back up, my kids, my grandkids loved the. Canton invention.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Loved it, they came home with.
Upcycle material.
Ups, upcycle material.
Uplike materials. They didn't get forty-eight, I stopped over Tuesday last week and peeked in and, yeah, they were doing. They're learning about forces and motions and building their, um, skeet shoot game and, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah. It, I told, I didn't wanna, and my kids would say we loved it, so hopefully it's something we get started and we'll continue. Moving forward, so.
All right, superintendent report.
Uh, some quick things there, AMD, um, I gave Jared, that's what we met last Thursday, they gave that to us. Um, outside of our regional director changing, the staff that support us with special ed, we're being told are gonna stay the same. Uh, they are, we were known, we did hear today that they've kind of had their first round of staff reductions. And so we'll see what that looks like for us going forward, but right now, outside of regional director, we're the same. Uh, I will be at the student success up tomorrow with ISB, are you there?
I'm not.
Um, with, uh, Hamish Brewer, so I'm looking forward to that. Uh, the junior cooling tower that we approved, timeline for that's back up a little bit, but they're still assuring us it'll be done by the end of July. So it'll be up and running with staff come back in August, keep your fingers crossed that, that actually happens, um. Yeah, uh, Cory talked about staff attending training conference in June, excited about that, both of those things directly aligned to. Our strategic priorities and what we're trying to do, um, so I think they'll do good work. Talked already a little bit about the Donovan group and some of the work they're doing, um, they'll get those and we'll push those out, put them on our website, uh, when those are done. Uh, SR update, working on getting his office set up at the junior high. Donovan group's working on some signage, like a branding of it for him. Uh, probably they're asked Reed or them to do a video about Ben when we get him onsite. Andrew's community, put it out there, talk about the program, so, um, he's pretty excited. Matt went through our, um, emergency plan last week with him and kind of updated with them being there. Uh, Nick and his family are moving this week, I think they close Friday. Uh, he's excited to get here, he reached out, already has a meeting with, uh, K and I next week and wants to shadow Randy for a day or two. Um, before he officially, officially takes over July first. Uh, my schedule, um, we take a personal day Friday to watch girls play softball for Dodge. Uh, and at that time, any other vacation or birthdays planned for June, but I, I do need to use a few, um, so I don't have a bunch hanging out there, so I may take a day or you. Day or two now with that, probably take most of the week of the fourth off as well, so, but other than that. Uh, until dead week when we're gone for the whole week for vacation, so.
Any other questions for that? Okay, next meeting, regular meeting, July eighth. That's on there before closed session, so I'm just saying that Kami, is that correct, July eighth?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this is a year where dates seem weird, like the. We kind of love, I start early, oh, my brain hurts, Mel.
July first is a month.
It always hurts, okay.
Oh.
So, all right.
Five weeks, that was like.
I was gonna say, there's been a couple of those odd, like five Thursdays or five Mondays and they just throw off the, the cycle.
This one's quick.
Yeah. Okay. Now, we're gonna go into closed session for superintendent evaluation, so I would entertain a motion to enter into closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five. Um, uh, one I of the open meeting law to evaluate the professional competence competency. An individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to the individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session. I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.